Court, right here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Bring it down. Good? All righty. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting this evening. It is Monday, August 19th. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Coleman, would you do the honors?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
If you'd like to pray with me, please bow your heads. Dear only Father, we come to you tonight to do the business of the city. We ask that you bless this council with wisdom and guidance and direction. Protect them, their families. Those that are in the audience, just protect everyone here, everyone watching online, that we drive home safely and that your will be done. We ask you to keep those that are protecting this country, both foreign and abroad and close by in this country. We ask that you keep them safe. We ask you all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. All righty. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. As I said earlier, this is the City Council meeting. It is Monday, August 19th, 2019. It is approximately 6:30 PM, and we have all members of council present this evening. Our first item of business that we have, and we have no ceremonial items, it'll be the approval of the minutes for the August 5th, 2019, regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Looks good.
Looks good.
No.
Good.
Good. All righty. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. I have one written request, and we have a distinguished guest this evening. We have Representative David Smith, our local rep here with us this evening, who'd like to address us. David, come on up. You had an awesome session. Great job.
We did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you very briefly tonight. And as mentioned, so I'm David Smith, the state representative. It's my honor to represent the people of East Seminole County up in Tallahassee and try to do the people's business. However, coming up on the 13th of September will be our annual legislative delegation meeting in Seminole County. It'll be, it will be properly public notice, but I just wanted to come here and personally invite you, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM on Friday, the 13th. Hopefully, it won't be unlucky in September. And we'll hear from citizens about their concerns and/or any business from the municipalities and the counties that might become, might come before the legislature in the 2020 session. As you may recall, due to our constitutional amendment change, the session in 2020 is moved up to January, which means session is, or session is in January, but committee weeks start in September. So we are back doing the people's business right away, and this, our delegation meeting will be the Friday before session, or committee week starts. So we, if you have any issues, and I know we're working together on a couple for the city of Oviedo, but I'd be happy to hear those at that time or anytime before.
Thank you, Representative. Is it 9:00 in the morning, as usual, up at the county chamber, county building, or we don't know yet?
1:00 to 4:00 PM in the afternoon.
Wow, look at that.
And that'll be put out. We'll also, you know, there was a few grumblings before I was chairman of the delegation, but we're now going to notice it, use social media to our advantage, because there was, some people didn't know about it. But it is properly noticed in newspapers, but with the advent of social media, we'll push it out in case somebody wants to come talk to us about their concerns.
And it's up the county service.
Board of County Commissioners Auditorium, they're 1:00 to 4:00 on the Friday, the 13th of September.
Friday, the 13th.
And I just want to say while you're here, thank you so much for your help on the texting and driving. I know we've been trying to get that chief chut now, and myself and everybody else just pushing. That was so needed in the state, and I know you yelled and screamed and helped us all get that through. So we gotta, you know, law may not be perfect, but it's still great. We can pull them over and at least get them off their phones. So that was a great job, David.
It was, it was a very productive session, although when you, the thousands of bills that filed, only 197 made it to the governor's desk. I am happy to say two of those were mine, that he signed into law, but the texting and driving was important. Supporting our firefighters was critical this year. There was a whole host of other pieces of legislation that I think is moving Florida in the right direction, and I hope to continue to do that work in 2020 and keep Florida on track.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All righty. Thank you.
And also, thank you so much for the, the work on the stormwater, stormwater ponds to bring that to our city as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that might be on the agenda tonight.
It is.
All righty. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda, our items number four through 12. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to move that we accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Councilman Britton, you have the floor.
It looks good to me.
Councilman Henkin?
David, as Deputy Mayor said, we have the approval of the stormwater grant that you guys worked on, that if this passes, we'll get approved. But thank you so much. That's not easy to get that kind of money to bring home to your district, and that was much needed. So I know it's not easy moving and shaking, but thank you so much for that. That is here in our agenda tonight. Thank you so much.
All righty. Anything on the right?
Just thanks again.
All righty. So the motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Catch up here to everybody. All right. Our first item of business, public hearing, it's Resolution Number 3783-19, street lighting services. I will turn it over now to Mr. Cobb.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve the non-abluorant assessment rule, adopt the annual assessment rate resolution, authorize certification to the tax collector for the street lighting assessment program. As you know, last year, we, we adopted the program. One of the things that the statutes require is that any time that you have a change or you add new properties to your assessment role, you have to have another public hearing and approve the rate, approve the assessment role, and certify it to the, to the tax collector. This year, we've had that instance. We've had some properties that changed in status. We've also had new properties come into the assessment role, and so we need to, we need to re-adopt the assessment role as well as the final rate resolution. It's recommended that the city council conduct the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 38, 3783-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3783-19.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is obviously campaign season, and we hear about the street lights and everything. I think one candidate said it today on social media. We have to pay for the lights, and we can't keep robbing from street repaving and all of these other things. So, you know, for this next group that comes up here, go ahead and cancel it, do whatever you want, but you're going to have to pay for them anyway. The lights that are out there are corroding. Poles need to be changed. We don't need to be spending all that electricity. So I can honestly say, except for a couple of political people, I have heard only good things about this. It was a smart thing for us to do, and now we're set for Mitchell Hammock being lit up. We're set for North Lockwood to be lit up. So it's a good soundbite in the campaign, but guys, it doesn't work that way. You know, we need the lights, and we can't keep robbing from street repaving to do it. So I commend all of you guys for voting for that. I did as well, and it was a good move for the city.
Thank you. Who is my second? Deputy Mayor? Oh, Chief, I'm sorry.
I'm fine with it. It's, it's something we need to do.
Got it. Anything from anyone else? Yes?
I think there's some good news from the League of Cities Conference this week. Doesn't Duke have a new LED light that's smaller, lighter, and cheaper, easier to install?
I was going to bring that up. Mr. Cobb and I had a long conversation with them, and we are happy to report that Duke has a new LED program, which is less expensive. The lights are smaller. There's different options on lights, different fixtures that can be replaced, even just fixtures that are like the rectangles and come down, kind of modernized.
And they would light up my kitchen if I had one in the kitchen.
Yes, it would. Mr. Cobb has Michael's, well, they, they know who he is over at Duke who takes care of all that, and I think you're going to get together with him, you know, sometime in the next few weeks.
Oh, yes, we are. Definitely. And they, they actually now, they're set up just like FPL. They have a regulated program and a non-regulated program, and we'll be, we can pursue either option to see which one would work best for us. So more, more options, too. That's the big thing.
Yeah, they had the metered option now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Duke has come, we will say, a long way since we started these conversations last year with them. FPL was light years ahead of them, no pun intended, and now Duke seems to have either caught up or maybe even a better program. But anything else? Everyone's good? All righty. Motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 3783-19. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to first reading of ordinances. It's ordinance number 1686, Mr. Pollock's favorite, puppy mills. We'll turn it over to Mr. Groot to read by title only, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance for the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to the retail sale of dogs and cats in public places, puppy mills and kitten factories. Providing for definitions, providing for conditions and restrictions and other requirements, providing for penalties, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification as well as the correction of scooter errors, and providing for ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us on this?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to establish regulations relating to the retail sale of dogs and cats. If you remember back on, at your July 17th meeting, you discussed adopting such an ordinance that would be a, a business model where the retail stores would not be allowed to sell puppies and kittens from puppy mills and kitten factories, and that it would require them to, if they do sell puppies and kittens, then they would be required to utilize rescue missions and the Humane Society and also the county. This ordinance does those. It actually is very similar to the county ordinance, and so it, we, fortunately, we only have one pet store in the city. Their business model, they do not sell from puppy factories and kitten, puppy mills and kitten factories, so that as far as what they're already doing, it's compliant with this ordinance. This ordinance does establish regulations regarding the retail sale of the puppies, but it also has some prohibitions in it regarding the sale on public right of ways and in public areas. So we also covered that as well. Tonight, we're recommending that you schedule the public hearing for September 5th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on ordinance number 1686 here in the Oviedo, Oviedo City Council chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, on September 5th at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion?
No, I'm good.
Everyone's good? All righty. Motion on the table is schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1686 on September 5th, 2019 at approximately 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 15, Resolution Number 3784-19, site development order number 505-19. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve an amendment to the preliminary subdivision plan for Andrews Crossing subdivision. This subdivision is, it's the former, it's the Duda headquarters property and the property that's located behind it. The proposed subdivision is on the east side of State Route 426. It is south of Mitchell Hammock Road. It's approximately 42.34 acres. It is designated commercial and medium density residential on the future land use map. It is, it is ZON, PUD, and it is also governed by the Andrews Crossing Non-Statutory Development Agreement, which was approved by ordinance number 1638, which was adopted by council in October of 2016. The proposed amendments, they are combining parcels four and five into a new parcel four. There is a portion of parcel four that's being transferred into Track D for the, to provide for more stormwater. Office uses have been eliminated from the former parcel four. The new, larger parcel four will contain the same number of dwelling units that was originally approved in the PUD, which is 70, and their landscape buffer requirements have been modified on the south and west property lines of the new parcel four. This new sub, this amendment divides the, the project into four parcels and six tracks, including one public right of way off of State Route 426. The tracks include two retention ponds, one lift station, one recreation area, and one conservation and mitigation area, which is on the east side of the property. The parcels include three commercial slash office parcels and one residential parcel with a maximum of 70 dwelling units. The project will be divided into phases, which are all spelled out within the, within the development agreement. The LPA considered this resolution at its August 5th, 2019 meeting, and thereat, they recommended approval. It is recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 3784-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I see the applicant is present. Do you have anything to add? Hey, George, how are you?
Good evening. Just fine, Mr. Mayor. My name is George Veely. I reside at 301 Carolyn Drive. I'm representing the project this evening. With me tonight is Aaron Archie and Clay Archie, who work with Adu Duda and Sons, and cast their bones with S.K. Consortium. They're our planners and civil engineers. So I don't have too much to add, because I think Brian did a, a good job of, of indicating what the changes were. But of course, one of the notes is that we're combining the two parcels. There's a net decrease in office of, I think, around 20,000 square feet with no increase in the number of townhomes. So a net reduction in the intensity of the project. We did adjust the phasing a little bit, probably doing the townhomes as a part of the first phase, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have, but you've seen this project before. There's no real changes to it. When you combine the two, we had to change some of the buffering a little bit and revisit some landscaping and so forth, but we've worked through all those issues with the city, and we'd seek your approval this evening for our amended preliminary subdivision plan. Again, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them or cast or, or the Archers.
While you're there, George, let me ask.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from council? Yeah, it all looked pretty basic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, of course. I have no written request to speak on this, but is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3784-19.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
No, we've seen this. It's been before us, you know, talked about it for a while. It's a nice project that'll modernize that whole Duda site, and I think it's fine. No worries.
Are you suggesting this site isn't modern?
Well, you know.
They did, they did have the first elevator in Oviedo. Got to give them credit. Deputy Mayor?
Looks great, and, and the reduction in intensity, I mean, that, you know, it's kind of a win-win on it. So yeah, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Great. Councilman Chudnow, anything?
I'm fine with it.
Keith? You're good. I do kind of miss the tractors that used to be out front there. That was always fun. But now, when you go to knock down the building, are we going to, like, dedicate the elevator to the historical society or something along those lines? Has that been thought through? It's very important. It is a scary elevator, I will say that. I've been in it once or twice. All righty. I don't see any other questions from council? Nope. All righty. Motion on the table is to adopt, so I'll call the question. All in favor of approving Resolution Number 3784-19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to, oh, you guys, you don't have to stay. I, I'm sure you've got homework or something to do.
Even you, David. If you have to go, we won't be offended. Dinner time. Good luck to you.
Actually, we should make George stay. George, wasn't this your seat? Isn't this where you used to sit? Yeah, I'd sit here or there, I used to remember. All righty. So we're going to move along. We're up to item number 16. It's Resolution Number 3789-19, and this is for a Class V license approval. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us on this one?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve a Class V alcohol license for the food factory establishment, which will be located on Oviedo on the Park, parcel 3B. This is what we call Building A of the two buildings that will be constructed on.
Good night, Representative.
The food factory is requesting a Class V license so that they can sell wine, beer, liquor to customers for consumption on premises and package for off premises as well. The, the Land Development Code has criteria for establishing a Class V liquor license, and the thing is, and it also requires city council approval of any Class II or Class V business establishments. And so the staff reviewed the application per the criteria. The criteria are land use compatibility and conformance with the Land Development Code, access and parking in the existing number of similar businesses or establishments. Regarding land use compatibility, the staff found that it is compatible with the existing and planned uses and conforms with the general character of the surrounding area. It's located within Oviedo on the Park in the downtown mixed-use Village Core zoning district, which is the one area where we do allow such establishments to be, to exist without having to have a restaurant connected to them. And as far as access and parking, the proposed site will have parking on it. There's also a shared parking agreement, which is an exhibit to the resolution that will allow for shared parking on Lot 4 as well, which you'll remember back from the Ford's garage and the 200 and some parking spaces that will be provided on park, on Lot 4. There's also available city, city street parking on Micro Bird Way, on City Walk Lane, as well as Center Lake Lane, City Plaza. They're all within close proximity to the property, so there is sufficient parking and also access to public streets as well, considering with City Walk Lane. So once again, the staff found that there's sufficient parking and access to the property. Last one is similar businesses. We have a requirement, Land Development Code has a requirement, that can only be one Class V certificate per every 200, 2,500 residents. Well, in a city of our size, that's about 15. We currently have zero. So this is really our first Class V establishment, so we, once again, there are, there's capacity to, to issue it. Then we also have some distance requirements to churches and to schools, and as well as another Class V establishment. Well, as I mentioned before, this is the only Class V establishment that would be in the city, so as far as the 1,000-foot requirement to the next Class V, we're fine there. There are no churches within 1,000 feet, and there are no schools within 2,000 feet of the property. Therefore, the, the application does meet the distance requirements within the Land Development Code. The staff recommends approval. The city attorney has reviewed the application and found no objections. Therefore, it's recommended that city council adopt Resolution Number 3789-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no written request to speak on this item. Does anybody in the council like to address us? Anybody in the audience would like to address the council? Excuse me. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3789-19.
Second.
Motion, second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
No, I don't have any comments. It's fine.
Councilman Chudnow?
I'm good.
Deputy Mayor?
Good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
All righty. I think this will be awesome, the start of the food factory, which is what everybody sees on the renderings that were approved earlier. Also Sanford Brewing coming down overlooking Oviedo on the Park, or actually Center Lake with the upstairs second floor balcony, so it's looking good, guys. Great job. And then I saw something, Michael, can you come on up for a second? I have a quick question. I thought I saw something about a groundbreaking on Thursday, so you're going to start turning some dirt? Is that what I saw?
Yes, Mayor. We're turning dirt on Lot 4, for which we have the site development order approval from you guys back on the 5th, I think.
Right, so that's up front, where Ford's garage.
That is correct. Fords are about ready to, we've seen their construction plans are about ready to submit. We have submitted our first vertical building there, too. We'll be submitting plans for our second building there by October 1.
Great.
And we should be submitting our plans for the food factory and the Sanford Brewing Company preliminary plans October 1 also.
That is awesome. Well, great job.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Cobb, while he's up here? Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. So any other discussion on Resolution 3789-19? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we have discussion items. This evening, we have none, so we're up to the city manager's report. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item. As you know, we've been working with the county, the DOT, and other, other partners on a planning study for State Route 434, and the consultants are ready to now come and have a work session with us. And so I would like to schedule a work session for you all to receive the, the report from the consultants sometime in September, and I was thinking maybe the 4th Monday in September, if that was possible. September, if that was possible.
The 4th, let's take a look. That's 30th?
I believe so, yes.
That looks good to me. Anybody else?
You know, Brian, I was talking to John about that tentative CRA meeting, and he said, because the budget was approved tonight and there wasn't any issues, that we probably won't need that. Could we do it before the council meeting on the 16th, or you need more time for it?
I think you're gonna need more time. I would recommend either the 23rd or the 30th. You do have five Mondays in September, and so your regular meetings are gonna be, obviously, the 5th and 16th, but we do have the 23rd and the 30th available, and normally, we do it on the last Monday of the month.
That's fine.
That's traditionally been, but if you, if you, if the 23rd works better for your calendar, then we can do that as well.
Either one.
The only requirement that we had is that we have to go after the counties. Once they have, we have the, they have to have the meeting with the county first, and so we get, we have to go after that, so, and September would be, that, late September works with their schedule.
30th?
I can do either one, it makes no difference, so whatever accommodates everyone else's schedule.
Either one.
Either one. Well, I think everyone's okay.
I'm good, so far. I might be traveling, but.
Which one?
Let's plan on the 30th. I don't know yet, but let's plan on the 30th, that should be good.
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay.
Chief, you good on 30th?
I'm good on 30th.
All right, pencil it in for the 30th, and if Councilman Britton's plan should change, we could always switch it to 23rd. I think that's something that we all should be here for. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty. Mr. Groot, anything for us?
Nothing, Chief, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Then we're into council reports. Councilman Henkin, you're up.
All good.
Councilman Chudnow?
The only thing I have is on Friday, August 30th, at 2:30, we're gonna have a groundbreaking for the Boys and Girls Club. It's been about a five-year total project to bring the club to the city, so hopefully, we can have a nice turnout for that and continue to support that everybody has shown for, and get the club up and running.
In my calendar, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
All righty, council member, let's see, Keith, you're up.
I'm good, just wanted to say we had some good meetings at the League of City. Brian, I do have one thing here from someone, gave me some literature on actually leasing generators and such for emergency operations, and I'll pass that on to you, that seemed to catch my eye, and I'll send you some other stuff when I get it all gathered together.
Great. Anything else?
Nope.
I'm up, just the same. Florida League of Cities is always a great event where we can all get together and talk about all the issues we have that are common. It's amazing, no matter where the city is, no matter the size of the city, the issues are always the same. But, as we talked about already, I think one of the best things that came out of it, the meeting with Duke was excellent on the LED lighting, you know, that one really caught our eye, and understanding these ADA lawsuits was a great session.
Right.
That we went to, and it was two hours, one hour of the law, and part of that was the lawsuits, and it's amazing, with this ADA stuff, it's two testers, right? That's what they call them. It's two testers who have no affiliation with the communities that are being sued, but they go on the website, and they say they tried to access it, and then a lawsuit gets filed. They don't live in the community, it's amazing, and there is an appeal they're waiting for to come back that might toss a whole bunch of these, because these people have no standing in these communities. So, that was quite interesting, and then the technical aspects of fixing it, I know folks are a little bit frustrated that our website isn't up and running, but guys, we're not the only one. We were in that room with what? Chief, you were there, too. There must have been 200 people in that room?
At least.
And every city in there, the majority of them have done the same thing we have, took their websites down, and it was actually what they had recommended, the attorney had recommended that cities do if they had not been sued yet, but the technical aspects of making your website 100% compatible, as the law requires, can never be achieved.
That's right. 98% is about the best you can.
98% is the best you can get. So, Patrick, I know you're working diligently on it, and my understanding is you may have something to announce in the next 30 to 45 days. Am I correct with that, or?
Parks.
Huh?
Parks.
All righty, well, just, we now understand your pain, I can tell you that.
Let us know when you get to that 98% mark.
It's amazing, there's just parts of the website that could never, ever meet the ADA law, and then there's legal arguments going on if that, if the ADA law really even applies, because the ADA law was written, they said, for buildings.
Yes.
You know, so it's.
It applies.
It's quite amazing to see what's, what was going on in that session, but, anyway, I've waxed on enough about that, and that will be the end of my report. Deputy Mayor Pollock, you're up.
At the beginning of August, Chief Coleman had sent out a memo about the update on the golf cart ordinances, and he had a recommendation in here to basically follow the sections in the Florida statutes for low-speed vehicles. Is there something more we can do as a city to get the word out and be able to follow these, as long as the, as long as the vehicles meet these requirements in the statutes, or, you know, and can we have a, I guess maybe we need to have like a little bit of a discussion item on it or something to see where we're at and what we need to do. I'm not, not sure where we go from here, but I know that there's some individuals that do have golf carts and do want to be compliant with it so that they can drive their golf carts around on certain roads, so.
On your behalf, at the last council meeting, I asked the council if we could have a discussion item, and the direction was for me to find an agenda that didn't have a whole lot of stuff on it so that we could have the discussion item, so.
Okay.
I'm monitoring the agendas very closely, and as soon as we get one that's what we would call a light agenda, we'll have it, we'll have it on the agenda board.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, I, when I got your email, I mentioned it during my report last, at the last meeting that you had asked, and.
Okay.
Since you couldn't be there for the last meeting, I went ahead and asked for you.
All right, perfect.
Well, actually, since he wasn't here, shouldn't we tell him that we already approved LSV vehicles? We're gonna have a discussion, I'm just making him feel better.
Think you just did.
Sorry, bud. See what happens when you miss a meeting and you leave Chief, me, and Stephen here?
Nah. That's a scary thought.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, no, that's all I, that's all I had.
All righty. Future meeting dates, we have Monday, August 26, 6:00 PM budget work session; Thursday,